Now I'm hoping that's boring.
I know.
I'm not. Won't say anything embarrassing then. Okay. All right, we ready? Perfect. Thank you. Those wishing to address the board during public comments during our public comment agenda item 5.02 must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting. It is now 5:01 PM. Any form submitted after the session has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. It is 5:01 PM on Monday, August 14, 2023. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are Director Barnes, Director Campbell, Director Ed Scorn, Director Whitfield, Student Representative Laura Wittenberg, Superintendent Sean Woodward, District Leadership Team members and district staff as well as members of the community. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are so happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Yep. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on on those issues either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Okay, we have no late items added to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the agenda dated August 14, 2023. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item 3.01, Public Review and Hearing of the 2324 Budget. It's another sheet, sorry Brenda. Welcome to the Monroe School District Board of Directors' Public Hearing for the 2324 Budget. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for you, the Monroe community, to share your input on the draft budget for the 2324 school year. Chief Financial Officer Brenda Hunt will present the budget this evening. Board directors will then have time to ask questions about the draft budget and then the community members will be invited to share their input through public comment. After this evening's public hearing, the board will consider the adoption of the final 2324 budget document at a public meeting on August 28, 2023. To help guide the proceedings of this budget hearing, we ask that, one, all speakers complete one of the public comment forms which are available on the back table. Please fill out the form and bring it forward to the board. Two, speakers will be called upon in the order the forms are received. Three, each speaker will be permitted to speak for up to five minutes. Four, each speaker's public comment should be focused on the draft budget. If speakers get off topic, the board president will remind them to refocus their comments on the draft budget. Five, speakers desiring more time to present their input to the board are encouraged to submit written statements either tonight or prior to the August 20, or prior to August 21st. Any information sent to the superintendent or an individual board member will be copied and shared with all board members. Six, speakers should not be overly repetitive, particularly if a prior speaker has already addressed a subject at great length. Seven, speakers should not make any derogatory nor inflammatory comments directed toward any individual. Eight, it is important to the board that all community members have an equal opportunity to be heard and that they are not intimidated by others with differing views. All comments are important this evening and should be listened to with respect. Again, thank you for being here this evening. Ms. Brenda Hunt?
Good evening. Seems like I just did this. So, welcome to the 2324 Budget Hearing this evening. And the purpose of this meeting is to go over the changes that we've made to the budget between this year and 2324. So the first thing that we talk about is the enrollment projections. Although the enrollment projections look different than what we've seen the past couple of months, they're the same numbers. And so on this slide, you see what we started with, with our budget for 2223. Those were the the numbers that we used to build our budget in the F203. The 2223 are the numbers that we're projecting that will end this year with, the 2324 budget with. And this is barring any changes that we made in August. The variance 22 actual to the, that's supposed to say 2320, 22 actual to 2223 budget. As you can see, we're down 67.21 kids. The biggest gap is the high school. The second is running start. So we have fewer students at the high school than we had anticipated and we have fewer students in running start than we had anticipated a year ago when we were looking at our budget. Our budget for next year, essentially, this is using the projections that we've seen a few times over the past couple of months. We are using 5,519, including running start and ALEs. And that is the budget that we, the enrollment that we used for our F203, which calculated revenue for our budget. That is 23.21 ahead of where we are right now, where we're projecting to add this year, or 0.42% over what we have right now. Any questions on enrollment?
These are numbers that you have projected for enrollment for this year. These are numbers that you already have for students with that. So if we have students who've moved in the area who've not enrolled, or parents who've not enrolled, the kids in kindergarten yet, or any of that kind of stuff.
These numbers are not based on what we currently have in the system for next year. These are based on historical roundups. I take the five-year average and apply the same growth or decline to project what we'll have in the future. I've eliminated the 1920 year because that was the start of COVID and I eliminated the last year that we were not in our buildings so that we don't have an artificial decline. And so these are the same projection models that I have used historically, with the exception of eliminating those two years. Okay. Next is our staffing. Once we have our enrollment projections, we use our staffing sheets which are calculated based on our enrollment. And we project out our number of teachers. We project out our number of classified folks who are paraeducators, our office professionals. Then we have our administrative staff and our bus drivers. And our bus drivers are based on routes and historical numbers of bus drivers and dispatchers, not based on student enrollment. And so based on our models for staffing, overall, we ended up with 10.4 more certificated staff than what we had last year. 8.4 of that is amongst the certificated instructional staff and the, our sped therapists and counselors, nurses, all of the folks that are considered certificated. And then we had two in our admin and that is essentially our, the addition of the assistant principals. This number, I always point out that if you were to compare this slide with what we have in our F195 for certificated staff, this is nine FTE higher than what we have in our F195 for certificated staff because we include all administrators on this page regardless of whether or not they're certificated or classified. And we have nine classified staff that are admin. Next is our classified staff. And the bottom number for classified staff is nine FTE lower than what the F195 says because again, our classified administrators are on the certificated page. And on this page, you can see we're down 3.79 overall, 1.27 increase for 1.27 decrease for the Paris and then the balance is on the other classified staff which includes OPs and transportation and and custodians and things. Any questions on our classified staff? Okay, revenue comparison. When I do the revenue comparison, I compare it out for the last five years. 1920, 2021, and 2122 are all actual numbers. They're completed years. Those are actual numbers. 2223 is what was approved for the budget revision just a few months ago. That is what the board approved for our revised budget for 2223. And then 2324 is our budget for next year. There's a few things that I wanted to point out on this page and that is historically, we have budgeted $1 million of revenue capacity and $1 million of expenditure capacity. And what capacity is, is that it is for those unknown dollars that we don't know we're going to get and the resulting unknown expenditures. This year, rather than having $1 million of expenditure capacity, I've put in 3 million. And my goal is, is not to have to do a budget extension again for $2 million like I have the past two years because there's a lot of of other grants coming in lately and we don't know if we're going to get those. And again, that money is not traditionally spent unless we get the additional revenue. Does that make sense? Where capacity is in this budget is local non-tax. We have approximately $1.6 million in local non-tax. We have about 700,000 in state special purpose and we have 700,000 in federal special purpose. And so those numbers are slightly inflated over what we have historically spent in the first three years because those are capacity built in and that equates to that $3 million. The other thing I wanted to note is that you will see that our state revenue, although we're just up approximately 26 kids, we have about 2 million more, slightly less excluding capacity. And that is because our budget is starting to shift slightly more towards state and tax money and less from our federal special purpose as the S or dollars begin to go away. And so we will see our federal special purpose dollars drop significantly when we look at our budget a year from now. This budget, federal special purpose still has $2.6 billion of S or 3 money in it. And this will be the last year that we can spend that money. On the next page, we have a pie chart to show what our budget, our revenue looks like. Our state dollars, including state in general, make up about 74% of our district programs. Our federal dollars are about 7% and our levy fund dollars are about 16%. The balance is a very small amount that is the other and the federal general purpose dollars. Any questions on revenue? Yes, sir.
So with our budget being up to 105, and the correct me if I'm wrong, the S or dollars we need to spend is at about 2.6 million? That we have to figure out as well. Are there areas where you're looking at, instead of doing the, the extra fund balance at 1 million instead of 3, are these areas where we're going to be able to find that money to be able to do when we, when we have our next year's budget, that we're not going to have to find areas to cut? So that we're not doing things that other districts are where they're having to cut staffing and things like that and we're able to find that money somewhere else. It's 2.6 million dollars, a lot of money, but it's also less than 2% of our overall budget. So where, what areas of margin can we find to make sure that those, we're not dependent on those dollars in the next fiscal year?
Well, next fiscal year, we'll have a variety of different, different things to look at. One, our enrollment may, may or may not go up. So we will have probably a IPD increase. We'll probably have that. We have, like we had said in our previous meetings, we have $2.6 million of S or dollars built into this budget. And we are still currently, we started several months ago, looking at things and evaluating effectiveness and efficiencies of programs. And we have a running list of things that we will consider to make up that $2.6 million. But we've transitioned for our new superintendent now and our goal is to, in the course of the 2324 year, develop a strategic plan. And so our reductions will be dependent on what our focus is for our strategic plan that is developed this year. So to say that we have a, we have a list, we have an idea, but to say that those are what we're actually going to reduce is hard to say right now because we'll align our budget changes to what our strategic plan ultimately ends up being.
I appreciate hearing that. We call it mission-driven budgeting. It's going to tell us where to spend the money.
Yes.
And Sean, as we move forward, I think one of the concerns that just is in the back of my head on the backboard, we're not in this situation, but I don't want to get us to August of next year and we're getting to a place of saying, oh, we got to figure out where to find that money. And that's, I think, just, I want to be proactive as we do that. I know that you're already thinking that, just to put that out there, that is on the back burner of my mind to make sure we're not looking to find multiple millions of dollars in the budget and we're having that conversation starting in June of next year. That's, I think, my big concern.
Yeah, you bet. And definitely Brendan and I have our first meeting, I think, September 18th to establish kind of a draft budget. And really, we'll look for three to three and a half million dollars worth of adjustments so that when we get to the point of having our strategic priorities identified, it'll make that a lot, a lot easier. So just draft form in September and then we'll bring more people along, along the way.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Any other questions on revenue? Next is our expenditure comparisons. The expenditures comparisons are presented in the same way in that the first three columns are our actual expenditures in the closed fiscal years of 1920, 2021, and 2122. The 2223 column is the year that we are still using and that fiscal year will close August 31st and will officially close the books on October 25th. And so we still present those in budget format. Those numbers will change once we know our actuals. And then the 2324 budget is what is in the current 2324 budget that the board will be asked to adopt on the 28th of August. Once again, there's $3 million of budgeted capacity in here. There's about 685,000 in basic education and the balance is in other instructional services. And so that's why that number is higher, much higher than what our historical three years are, is that there is roughly $2.7 million in, in that line item that is capacity to give us the ability to spend additional monies if it comes in. Does that make sense? Again, this is the pie chart representing that. One-time federal dollars continue to lower other categorical percentages. Basic ed and CTE for this budget for next year is currently 56%. And the rest, the federal special programs, special education and categorical programs make up 21% of our budget. The $2.6 million, once again, are lowering those percentages and once that $2.6 million is gone, then the basic ed and CTE total will ultimately increase. On this page, I did tell you where the revenue capacity, where the capacity was. Looking at our expenditures by object, this is how we routinely look at our expenditures. Salaries, certificated, classified, and benefits are increased due to the 3.7% IPD as well as our negotiated collective bargaining agreements. We have to honor what we have bargained historically. The $2.6 million of S or 3 was pulled from the 2223 budget during the budget revision process and set aside the, to add to the 2324 budget in order to reduce the reductions that we would have to do at one single time and to be more thoughtful about what those reductions may be.
So a quick question. So do these numbers include the terms that are in the tentative agreement with the PSCU?
Yes. Yeah, that came in early enough that we were able to build that in. Great question. So in the pie graph, salaries and benefits make up 83% of our budgeted expenditures and the balance is our material supplies and operating costs. Okay, so that is everything non-employee. Any questions on expenditures? Okay, seeing none. General fund summary. This same format, actual numbers for the last three completed years. 2223 is what our beginning fund balance, revenues, expenditures, and ending fund balance were projected to be in our budget extension for 2223. And the last column is what our beginning fund balance is projected to be as well as our revenues expenditures and where we project ending about 10.3 million. And what that is, is 9.8% of our revenues. And although 9.8% of our revenues is lower than it has been in the last five years, it's still a healthy number. The way that that is made up is that 450,000 is projected to be restricted revenue. So it's revenue like CTE or LAP or gifts or grants that we weren't, that we didn't spend this year. And so that has to carry over and retain its identity. So we're projecting that to be around 450,000. The next is non-spendable fund balance and that is typically exclusively prepaid, when we have prepaid expenditures and when we have commodity inventory. So when we buy things for food service and it's still sitting in the warehouse, we do an inventory. The value of that is also set aside. Next is assigned for other purposes, 2.5 million. That's 24.4% of our total fund balance or 2.4% of our revenues. And that's made up of all program carryover. It's made of a building budget carryover. It's made up of a percentage of our uncompensated absences. It's made up of professional development that has not been spent and all the things that we have to carry over because it's our commitment to our buildings and our staff as far as, so that we don't have a big expenditures at the end of the year and they use it or lose it type of fashion. It's thoughtful spending. The skipping unassigned, unassigned for minimum fund balance, the one on the bottom, this is the board's fund balance policy. Currently, the board's fund balance policy is 5% of revenues plus $1,115,000. So that's 6.366,439,000, $6,366,439 is that 5% plus the 1,115,000. It's 61.62% of our total fund balance and 6.06% of our revenues. And so the one above that is, are the dollars that don't fit into any of these other categories. Meaning that's the portion of our fund balance that currently has no strings attached. And that is currently 6.72% of our total fund balance or 0.66% of our revenues. Any questions on this?
On the last category, we have discretionary spending. If we see a need, we can apply that wherever it's needed, correct?
Yes, sir. There's two ways for the board to restrict revenue. For example, if the board wanted to restrict revenue to be spent on curriculum. If you passed a resolution at a board meeting to restrict revenue for this curriculum and it's specific, then that would fall down to that, another GL that's not on here because we don't have any resolutions. But that would set that aside and that's the only thing that that money can be spent on in a relatively short period of time. So it's not something you could pass and leave in fund balance indefinitely. It's usually set aside for something that's going to happen in the following year. Another thing is setting money aside for major repairs when there's no other resources for major repairs.
Which we're finding ourselves there now because the remaining balance of our bond money is spoken for.
And again, that can be done with a very specific resolution set aside and that's all it can be spent on. And again, it typically needs to be used within the following year. If you do it at year end, it's kind of a short-term hold on it.
And these monies of the unassigned balance, these are just like everything else. These are limited to this fiscal year, correct?
On the fund balance? Well, the fund balance change is pretty much on a monthly basis. This is just a snapshot of where we are at year end.
As opposed to monies that are time-bound because they come from tax dollars to be used within a certain timeline. For example, many of our account line items have to be used within this fiscal year before August 31st. And so one of the questions is if we chose to take this 693 grand and we said we want to take all of it or a portion of it and put it aside for something like repairs because our bond money is so depleted that we have an HVAC emergency or, or a heating, you know, issue and it's January, that the monies are set aside. If we, if we put those monies into restricted funds, would they carry over into the following fiscal year by chance if we still needed them or would those have to go away at the end of fiscal year?
I would have to check. The intent is that it happens in the, for example, if you did it at year end, then it would be in the restricted fund balance for 2324. I would have to check to see if it carried over if another resolution was required.
The goal is not to create a savings account out of it, but it is understanding to try and navigate the resources we have, recognizing there are expenditure areas that no longer have any funding. And Victor needs something for an emergency. We want to make sure that that's there. That's as an example. It's not just that area, but other areas. If we chose to restrict, can that carry over to the following year?
I would have to check the logistics of that. I did want to point out that anytime you do something like that, that because it's not a line item in the budget, you're essentially authorizing, say, for example, if you restricted six hundred ninety three thousand, then you're essentially saying that we can go into our, our capacity and spend six hundred ninety three thousand dollars of our capacity without offsetting revenue. So, essentially, you're creating a budget that's no longer balanced. And so, as long as, which is okay, but I just want the board to be aware of that. Okay, because when we restrict, when we restrict revenue, we're not going to get, I mean, restrict bud- fund balance, we're not going to get additional revenue to, when we spend fund balance or we use what we restrict in fund balance. So, as long as we all know that, then it's not a surprise at year end.
And just to be clear, if we do decide to spend any of the minimum fund balance, the next year we would need to replenish that, or you would need to find a way to replenish that because of that policy.
As long as the minimum fund balance policy exists, it's my obligation to do one of two things. End the year with that much in minimum fund balance or notify the board in ample time so that you know that that's not going to happen and we would have to change our fund balance policy.
So, would like this unassigned fund balance get moved into that minimum?
It would, it would have its own GL if you passed another res- resolution.
Brenda, can you talk to us about the reasoning why the five percent plus the one million, whatever it is that gets us to the number that we have? Because I'm looking at, for example, this month's payroll that's on our consent agenda, it doesn't even cover a month of payroll.
No, it doesn't.
It's, it's close to what payroll used to be, but just as salaries go up over time with inflation, everything. So, if we had an issue with state funding and something happened, we couldn't even pay our staff for a month. And so, there are questions of why was the number chosen where we're at? I know it can cover a lot of things, but that's one gigantic monthly line item that we have to make sure that we take care of.
The fund balance policy that the board adopted way back when. And the, when I first came, the fund balance was really, really low. And so, they made a fund balance policy to gradually grow our fund balance up to three percent in a designated amount of time. Well, once we reached that three percent, then the board was looking for their definition of what a healthy fund balance was because it changes by board members, what their definition of a healthy fund balance is. The board that adopted and made the current fund balance felt as though five million dollars was a healthy five percent of revenues was a healthy fund balance. And the reason why we added the one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand is that there was one year that we were making budget reductions. It was around the, it was pre, before the McCleary, but we were having trouble balancing our, our budget. And there were expenditures that were in our capital projects fund that we weren't sure that we would be able to cover in our capital projects fund. It amounted to one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand. So, what the board did is say, we're going to spend it in capital if we have enough money in capital, but we're going to reserve it in general fund just in case. Well, it turns out that we were able to pay for it in capital and that one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars never got taken out of the policy.
So, it sounds like this policy just needs to be updated a little bit and have some. How long has it been, at least, well, McCleary was eight, was five years ago, so.
It's, it's longer, it might be thirteen-ish.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a while.
You know what policy number it is?
No, but I could look it up. But I think that before we do that, I think that the board may want to have a conversation about what the current board's definition of a healthy fund balance is. And then we can prepare a, a resolution for a current fund balance.
Just out of curiosity, Shawnee, your other districts that you're at, did you have a minimum fund, fund balance policy in your budgets? And what did that look like?
Yeah, the, excuse me, the one I need was exactly, it was always, was it a set number? It was just to cover one month's salary, just like you suggested. So, it moved every year up.
Did Ponderay have one similar?
Uh, Ponderay, I think it was five percent, but we had a CFO and a board that was very fiscally conservative. So, they hovered around ten perth- ten percent when, uh, with everything combined. That was the average when I was there.
Brenda, is it possible to do a little digging and see what minimum fund balances are of some of our, like, districts in our area?
Absolutely.
I would love to see what they look, what that looks like as well, just as a comparative to discuss that. If this is something that we do look into, it'd be nice to have some other metrics rather than arbitrarily us just saying, hey, I like this number.
So, you're looking at percentages of total rather than dollars?
Or be either, oh, they may have a policy that says we want ten million dollars, that maybe say ten percent, five percent. Or it's something like, we can cover a month's salary, what that looks like.
Yeah, most districts, it's, it's a percentage of expenditures. And Monroe is still expend, uh, percentages of revenues as well. So, I can get what they have, but most of them will be tied to expenditures rather than revenues. Any other questions on this summary for general fund? Again, lastly, I wanted to point out for general fund, reiterate, we have two point six million dollars of S or dollars. And what that reduction will look like a year from now will be tied directly with our developing strategic plan. Our M-SOC disclosure, this is something that the legislation requires us to do on a month, on an annual basis now as part of our budget hearing. And this is probably the fourth year we had to do an M-SOC disclosure. Essentially, an M-SOC disclosure is a material supplies and operating cost disclosures. And we're required to spend a minimum of what we get for M-SOCs for M-SOCs. And as long as our number exceeds our M-SOCs, then we're good. If we were spending our M-SOCs on staff, we would have to explain why. And so, we are spending two point nine million dollars more in M-SOCs than what we are receiving for M-SOCs. And it is primarily a lot of additional costs that are built in because of, for example, attorneys and high costs of everything. Fuel, insurance. Everything, our attorney fees, our, our election fees, our auditor fees, our software subscriptions, all the costs are going up. And so, everything that we charge to technically program seven, most of those charges have gone up thirty percent since two years ago. They are increasing rapidly, much like our own expenditures in our homes are going up drastically.
Do you have a rough percentage of, uh, the attorney fees?
For this budget?
For this number, correct?
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at the exact number for attorney's fees. But we had, during our budget extension, our attorney fees for this year, I increased them significantly. What's in next year's budget, I reduced because a lot of the public records that we've been paying for throughout this year are going away.
What area of our budget is getting the big hit then if we're spending over too many dollars beyond?
Well, that's a smaller number than we've spent in the past.
Is it, is it, do we pull that extra that coming from general fund?
It comes from general fund, yeah. That's where it's all, it's all that money that's not the eighty three percent that salaries. Yeah.
So, attorney fees were mentioned multiple times, let me update on reducing those fees from our board review discussion.
Well, one of them Brenda mentioned is just, uh, two, well, two things. One is we're going to be very mindful of what we're pushing out when it comes to redaction of public records. And as, as we analyze forward, if we get an uptick in public records requests, we would consider hiring within additional staff here versus pushing out to have our legal form, firm to do those redactions. Something that I'm more familiar with in other districts that I've worked in and it can be a significant cost savings for sure. But I think much of it will just, we're dealing with different issues now than we were before and a lot of those things are wrapping up.
Okay, I thought we were going to look into like the shared service option.
Oh, through the ESD, uh, no, I mean, that really is for, uh, smaller districts that utilize legal services at a much lower level than, than we do. So, I, I do not think the ESD would, would be appropriate for our district size. I, I believe much, much of the people who access that are, are three thousand students or, or below. I don't think, have you, have we looked into that as a district?
We have not.
Yeah, but I, I can do more work on that, but no, we, we haven't done that as of yet.
Yeah, I mean, even if it's just like, just, uh, they handle our public records requests or just handle a portion of our attorney's fees.
We can do that.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay, now, the next several slides are the funds other than the general fund. So, the capital projects fund, we're anticipating a two point four million beginning fund balance. We're anticipating about three hundred and thirty four thousand of revenue and one million in expenditures. I wanted to point out that as of this budget, we anticipate having no more. We, we've been out of bond dollars for several budget cycles. But after this year, we will no longer have the state match dollars. So, essentially, what the fund balance and the expenditures are are really small, undesignedated fund balances in the capital projects, which is less than a hundred thousand and mitigation fees, which are for adding capacity. So, those have very big restrictions on what they may be used for. But I provided a million dollar capacity in there in case there is something that we can use those resources for because we have to use mitigation fees within ten years of receiving them. So, we, we have, we have to make sure that we do spend those ultimately. But I just built in that capacity in the event that, that something comes up that we can't spend mitigation fees on. But there is no more capacity in the budget for routine capital projects, small capital projects. Debt service fund, debt service fund is the fund that handles the, the principal and interest for our bonds. And so, expenditures are typically our, our principal and interest for that year plus five thousand dollars for any bond handling fees that we may have. And so, I'm projecting the three point nine million beginning fund balance revenues of approximately seven point five six. That is taxpayer dollars plus investment earnings. And that's predominantly all that comes in there for revenues, leaving a surplus of approximately two hundred and sixty seven and ending with four point two million dollars. And we're adding to our fund balance slightly each year because our principal will begin to balloon out. And we don't want to have a low rate and then have to shoot it up real high when our balloon payments start to happen. Does that make sense? Next slide, transportation vehicle fund. Transportation vehicle fund, our revenue primarily comes from the state for the buses that are on the depreciation schedule. We also get investment earnings and we still have about two hundred and thirty nine dollars, two hundred and thirty, yeah, two hundred and thirty nine dollars out there in taxpayer money. So, it's not a big, big amount, but it's primarily state revenue due to depreciation on the buses. Expenditures, I usually build in enough capacity to spend a majority because we always have the, the question at this time of year about whether or not the buses that we ordered this year will actually get here in time or if they'll have to come out of next year's budget. And so, as it turns out, the buses doesn't look like they're going to get here. And so, they'll have to come out of next year's budget. So, I want there to be enough capacity in that budget to cover paying for those, those buses once they come in. So, we're anticipating having an ending fund balance of around ninety three thousand if this whole one point four million is, is spent.
So, this depreciation revenue is enough to cover maintenance and buying, you know, a couple of few new buses every year?
Transportation vehicle fund cannot cover routine maintenance. It can cover big, big projects, but they have to be approved by OSPI first. This revenue is primarily for the purchase of buses.
I see.
Any other questions? One more, ASB, Associated Student Body. These budgets are done by the students at the secondary schools. And then the elementary schools do their budgets with a lot of help from the principal. And so, we do not, we check these budgets or these plans that the students sent over for reasonableness. But we don't change their budgets, it's their work, so we present them the way they are. And they routinely do a good job. So, we are anticipating that they'll still be about four hundred and twenty one thousand dollars in fund balance at the end of next year. And this slide reflects what the budgets are as presented from the individual buildings. And so, that four hundred and twenty one thousand is distributed amongst all of our, our buildings that have an ASB fund. Any questions on this? Because that is all I have.
All right, Brenda, so moving forward, we'll do for a budget adoption in our next meeting then, or is, what is this collecting for then?
Yes, on Ju- on August twenty eighth, you will have a resolution. And the resolution will be in the consent agenda. And once you pass that resolution, you are essentially adopting the budgets that are presented tonight unless we make changes between now and then.
When I was making comment also about our minimum fund balance and the policy on that, by the way, thank you, well, I found that was six zero two two. I don't know that, that we, I'm not suggesting we have time to do that, but I think that could be a conversation for us to have moving forward to adjust something like that. Something we can look into. But I think that, given our timeline, that's not what I'm suggesting, that we do this in the next couple of weeks and change all of that.
Well, I can shoot out an email and get other district policies relatively quickly. Districts that have watched a model policies, they'll be six oh two two for all of them, so I can just go out and look.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Just had a comment, so I reviewed the thirty-page presentation and then the fifty-eight-page executive summary. And once again, I'm just hit with the overall overwhelming responsibility we have for the school, the school board. The consecutive summary breaks down every individual, every expense. What we approve and what you put forward is what makes the school operate. And it's a lot of responsibility and budgeting and making sure that that's taxpayers' dollars are, are well spent is a lot of responsibility. And going forward, looking at our budget priorities or our strategic plan to make sure those things fall in line. If you want a breakdown, I put this to the public, if you want a, a breakdown of expenses, teachers' ratios and stuff, go through the executive summary. It's very good. I did not go through the F one twenty five, one ninety five, which is, don't go to that. That is crazy, figuring out the state funding and such.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you, Brenda. Hey.
Thank you very much. It looks really good.
Okay, I am opening up to questions or comments from the public. And I believe we have two. I'm just gonna go. You asked if there had to be something turned in. Uh, under the guidelines that I have, number two speakers will be called upon in the order the forms are received. Yeah. But I believe that we can take questions or comments from the public if they did not submit a form. Okay. All right. So I'll go ahead and we'll go Cindy Ladd is first.
Hi, I'm Cindy Ladd. Until very recently, like a couple of weeks ago, I was the grandparent of two students in Monroe schools. I understand that they have just moved to another school district though, so now I'm a concerned citizen. Oh, sure. There. All right. This is brief. It's regarding the multi-language learners. It's my understanding that the Monroe School Board has stated that multi-language learners are one of their top priorities. I also understand that the budget or that the board has chosen to cut multi-language learning staffing district-wide for the upcoming school year, despite a current shortage of staffing requiring MLL employees to double and in some cases triple up on their duties at the expense of the multi-language learners. Just in case you're not aware of that. I'm urging you today to reconsider your cuts and choose to fund the multi-language program according to student need rather than the minimal state requirements and budget. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal?
Hi, I'm Crystal Blakely. I'm a parent in the district. And my concern is the staffing that we are putting forth towards our music education. We had two elementary schools that had no general music teachers last year. And my understanding is that one of those schools now has a point two teacher, which means one grade level is going to get general music. And there is a direct correlation between general music and test scores. So, and then there is no, to my understanding, no choir at either of our middle schools nor at our high school this next year. I do note that the band director was asked to teach a super contract in order to cover one section of choir. But that doesn't do anything for the school musical that pulls in random kids throughout the year. So when you're checking through these budget numbers, general music is a big area of need.
Are there any other questions?
Sorry for my misunderstanding on the process. I'm Heather Young, parent in the district. Thank you so much, Brenda, as always, for the work that you do on the budget as a member of the Budget Committee. I deeply appreciate it and I pepper you with questions all the time. But I know there's a lot of people following along at home for whom this is still pretty opaque because it does take some time to understand. And in addition to the concerns around MLL and music that have already been expressed, so I won't go into those. We're hearing similar things about drama. And the concern that I have as somebody who spent a tremendous amount of time working to make sure that we were successful in our bid to renew the levy is that the, the statement that was made was that the levy was going to help ensure that we didn't have to cut things like music and MLL and drama. So we passed the levy. Can you please assure us that those cuts are not being made or help us to understand how they fit into this budget? Because I think there's a lot of people that are hearing rumors and that are very, very concerned that they were just hoodwinked. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll ask three times for more questions or comments. Are there any more questions or comments about the budget hearing? Any more questions or comments about the budget hearing? Any more questions about the comment or any more questions or comments about the public hearing? Okay. I adjourn the review and hearing of the 2324 budget. Moving on to agenda item 4.01 and 4.02. I would like to invite Dan Johnston, Executive Director of Human Resources, to assist and guide us in the first reading of both policies, policy 5406 and policy 5406B. Hey, Dan.
Good evening. So the first reading for these policies, the RCW governing shared leave was adjusted by the legislature. So these policy adjustments are just reflecting the changes in the law. So shared leave gives our employees the opportunity to donate leave to someone in need, one of their coworkers. And there are specific guidelines for that. The guidelines have been adjusted to allow shared leave in the event of a disability, a pregnancy disability, or for the purpose of parental leave or someone who is the victim of domestic violence, sexual assault, or stalking. So those were the adjustments to the law and our policy, the policy and the procedure adjustments reflect that word for word. So that's what we're bringing to you. Any questions about shared leave?
So is the requirement to provide documentation required by the law as well?
Yes.
Because I, I mean, in my opinion, these new additions, I would find it hard maybe for some people to come forward if it's required for documentation. So that part just threw me off at least. But if it's required by law, we can't really change it.
I'm sorry?
I said, but if it's required by law, we can't really change it.
Well, there's some things that are harder. Like stalking might be a more difficult thing to, to document. But generally speaking, shared leave, there's a process, they fill out a form and they indicate the reason that they need it. They attach any verification, it goes through an approval process. So there's not a, there's not a specific guideline that you have to submit this, this, this document. Just reasonable evidence that what you're requesting meets the guidance in the law.
That's okay.
Then with, with the benefits that employees have, so is this shared leave is that borrowed from vacations or from built-up medical? And, and do those carry over year by year, year after year?
It's, it's sick leave. So it's, it's basically one employee's sick leave donating to another employee. It's a great program. It, it comes from the same bake of leave, the same liability for the district. So for us as a district or really shared districts in the state, because we, if an employee transfers from Monroe to Snohomers, their sick leave balance is going to go with them. So, so it's a statewide educator sick leave balance. And it can go from certified to classified, it can go from administration to. It's a, it's a nice program because it allows people to help their coworkers when they're in need with a very real donation, but that just comes from their leave balance. So I've seen it used many times for the positive benefit of somebody who has, you know, an unexpected situation. Someone, someone with a long-term medical need, all of a sudden they're out. Somebody with a, a family member who has an emergency or catastrophic situation and they need to be out. And it's a way that coworkers can come to their aid. The way the leave sharing works is it's, it's monetary. So if an employee who makes a higher wage donates eight hours of time to somebody with a lower wage, it might be 12 hours to that person or, or vice versa, it might be less. But it's about the value of the leave according to the salary or the hourly wage that the person makes. But they donate it in hours and it gets translated by payroll for the appropriate amount of time.
Do we have, as part of our benefits, do we have disability or short-term disability? Would that come into play for?
We do. Employees do have some disability insurance. They have some discretion about the amount of the disability because some of it is funded through, through a payroll deduction. So employees get some, they get some control over which policy they select.
Disability is usually 60% of, of income.
There's a 60% option, there's a 50% option, and then there's a option where you can decline it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, agenda item 5.01, student representative. Our student representative will present a report highlighting student activities throughout the district. Hey, Laura.
Hi. Um, there is not much to report on from specifically Sky Valley. However, last week, I believe it was Wednesday, we did a student focus group with superintendent Mr. Sean Woodward. And we talked about what's going well in the district, what's, what could use improvement. And it was really, really great. I enjoyed it a lot. There was five of us there. And I believe there will be opportunities for more of them in the future. And I highly recommend them to everybody. They were a great opportunity just to visit about what's going well in our school district and how we can change it. And it's not just for students either, correct? Okay, so anybody can go to them. They're great. So, yeah, any questions?
Well, I'm really glad that you were involved in that, in the student one. I'm curious, since you guys asked some things that were, or you talked about things that were going well and things that need improvement. From your guys' perspective, from students, what were some of the highlights of things that you see that are going really well in our district? And what are some of the things that we need to work on?
Um, so a lot of students said that the teachers, they have a really good relationship with their teachers and principals and just staff in the district. So I thought that was really cool. And then a lot of people, or I was the only student from Sky Valley. Most of the students were from Monroe High School. And they said there was a lot of like vandalism and stuff going on at Monroe High School that could be fixed. And at Sky Valley, I've noticed that a lot of the students have a lot to say, but they won't like do anything about what they, like, they have a lot and a lot to say when it's just students around, but like they won't say anything to the teachers, like to rec, like they won't recommend anything, like how to change it and stuff. So maybe the student focus groups will improve that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Laura. Okay, moving on to agenda item 5.02, public comment. Public comment forms received after the meeting has started will be saved for the following meeting. We welcome and value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is the policy of the Monroe School District to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among district employees, parents, and the public. We kindly ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit comments to three minutes. A designated speaker for a group is asked to keep comments to five minutes. If you have a personnel concern, any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. The board does not respond to public comments during the business meeting. Please note that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, targets a protected class, or exceeds the time limit. As the board president, I will determine the appropriateness of all such rulings. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone. If you, if you are attending the meeting virtually, please join us as a panelist, allow video, and unmute your microphone. Our first speaker is Elizabeth. Elizabeth, can you please state your name for the record and your relationship with our schools?
So Elizabeth Cunnin, I've been here 36, 32 years. Um, you guys talk about transparency and commitment. I don't know where it was. Because the district left my son out of it. You left him to be with adults who wanted to skirt the law because they don't like it. One question, one three-minute phone call would have stopped it. They took his rights away. They took what they wanted, used it. No one stopped it. Every step of the way, laws, school policy procedures were ignored or broken. Nothing went as it should. But again, you knew this. I told you. When I called my son's vice principal last August, asked what was going on, she said, that's not what we said. That's not what, what we meant. I need to call my CO. No one came to help. They knew what had happened. He needed your help then. It's too late. But you knew that. We followed the policies to make the official complaint when we finally could. The board knew this May 8th. We, when it happened, I told you, May 8th. Only silence. It took going to the SRO forum facing down the ones who took advantage of it, telling the new superintendent, who had no idea what was going on, he came, he listened. He engaged. We never said our son didn't do it. What we said is he didn't do what was said he did. Someone here knew what was going on last August. No one did anything for him. You have all known since May 8th, no one reached out to us. I reminded you another time, saying that no one had done anything from the first time we sent in via complaint. Nothing from you. Nothing can be done for our son. I don't want this to happen to anybody ever again. Everything that could go wrong happened, went wrong. Where were you all? Where were you? You were focused on other things that were going on and you totally let him down, totally. You know what it cost him because I told you. It was in the stuff I sent you. You don't care? It's going to be with him forever. It does not go away. You hurt him. I want to help so it doesn't happen again. But no, you don't want to talk to me. No one, no one, not one of you reached out to me. And the only person who did never followed through with it. The one person from the school district who works here never followed through. So where is the transparency? Where's the commitment? It's my son had to pay for it. So I'm here. I want to make sure it doesn't happen again. So call me, do something because I'm here. I'm not going away. And I'm not letting it end because it's not going to happen again.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Elizabeth. Heather? Can you state your name for the record and your relationship to our schools?
I'm still Heather Young. I'm still a parent in the district. So to quote Groundhog Day, here we are again. On July twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety, the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law. And it was to help make sure that people with disabilities could participate alongside their non-disabled peers in public life and, among other things, in our democracy. On July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, exactly thirty-three years later, as it turned out, you all made the decision to try to limit public access to a purportedly public meeting. I don't ever, ever want to hear you pay lip service thanking me for my service again when you make me beg for access to a public meeting. I have a service-connected disability. And I had somebody from the district call and offer to help me make travel arrangements because you did not want to offer a Zoom option to a public meeting. That's ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. It's absolutely not a good look in an auction, an election year. So I want to understand what your commitment is to upholding the civil rights of all constituents. Unfortunately, our schools have become the battleground on which a culture war is being fought. And that's, that's definitely an unfortunate thing, but it's really happening. We have people that are going to different school boards screaming about book bans, being upset about pronouns, and, and generally making things difficult for a lot of people in the community. And because of that, and because I care deeply about the civil rights of all the students, and I end up having to fight for them because I have two kids with disabilities in the district. I've joined an organization that is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization advocating for an inclusive public education system. Called Defense of Democracy. And one of the things that I am here to ask you tonight is to sign a pledge. As an elected official representing our school district, I'm asking you to sign a pledge. The foundation of our country is freedom, democracy, and liberty, and the pledge underscores these tenets. Signers pledge to defend the civil rights of all members of their community, regardless of race, sexual orientation, religious affiliation, or anything else. Here's the pledge. I acknowledge that my constituency is made up of individuals from every walk of life, all religions, cultural backgrounds, gender identities, and sexual orientations. I recognize at this time that our LGBTQ plus and Black, Indigenous, and families of color face significant threats from extremist groups. I pledge to give a voice to and to protect the civil rights of all members of my constituency. I acknowledge that an excellent public education system and access to information is the cornerstone of a fully functioning society. I pledge to support and, when necessary, advocate for teachers, librarians, and other educators within my public school system. Parents should be involved in and have input regarding their own child's education. However, this right does not extend to other children in the school system. By signing this pledge, I acknowledge that our education professionals are the ones who are best qualified to make decisions regarding materials included in their classrooms and libraries. None of that should be controversial, and for most of us, it's not. So I'm looking forward to seeing who among you is willing to sign up and pledge to protect the civil rights of all the constituents and protect public education in Monroe. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Crystal?
As Heather said, I'm still Crystal Blakely. I'm still a parent in the district. Um, so I'm up here for two things. One, I appreciated the Zoom option for the board retreat. I would like to encourage the board to make sure that those are recorded and available for constituents later. There is a large portion of our parents who cannot participate in a meeting that happens at nine o'clock in the morning. Including for the one back before the school year ended, teachers can't participate and see these things because they are doing things. So having, if you've got it on Zoom, having it recorded would be highly recommended. And better mic'd. The sound at that meeting was a little off. Um, the other thing was I wanted to say thank you to Sean Woodward for hosting these focus groups. I attended one as a parent, and I highly recommend parents attend them when they can. But also, my students, both a middle schooler and a high schooler, attended one together and came home with nothing but good things to say and excitement for the coming school year. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Crystal. All right, agenda item six point zero one, policy three four three two, emergencies. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve revisions to policy thirty-four thirty-two emergencies as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion on a second. That the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve revisions to policy for thirty-four thirty-two emergencies as presented. Discussion?
Yeah, I guess I had a general question. So this is a pretty big move from this move of evade, defend, to lockdowns. So when do we expect, like, these procedures to be ready to review or these policies to be completed?
Hey, Vic.
Yeah, Kelly was not able to be here tonight, so I'll represent him. What we've done is, is we've made these, obviously, as you can see, more in alignment with what we've, excuse me, with what our, what's the policies are. But also, as a staff, as a staff, they made decisions that we would change the move evade and defend to a more like policy. We worked with this summer going to what we call Alice Training, and we're now going to be sharing some of that information with our administrative teams to come into play. But we still haven't changed what we're going to be actually doing. We're still going to follow and make sure our kids know what to do during lockdown drills. But it will no longer have the simulations that are in there. That's mainly the, to just of going from the move evade and defend. That helps. So we're hoping within the school year, and by spring, we'll have something to bring forward for you with agreements from all groups.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vic, before you sit down, one of the things I, is a concern that is in the back of my mind when it comes to the evacuations of things, especially when we're looking at emergency situations, is, I know that in, it was one or two years ago, we had issues with students who had disability access issues and what to do in those situations to make sure that we're taking care of the students and they're able to get out when they need to. And that is one of the big things that we really want to make sure is we're looking at these policy changes, that that's in the forefront of the minds of our public administrators to make sure that all of our students are able to get to safe locations.
Yeah, absolutely. I, it was around two years ago when it was brought to my attention. We worked with David and his team, and we've put in all of the emergency slides for our schools with second-story buildings. And since then, too, all the staff have been educated on how to use them. And every year, there's a re-teaching I'll use to help the staff as we hire and people move along. Is there anything else, David, you'd like to add to that?
Come on up to the mic, David.
Yeah, but you're, you are correct. It was around two years ago when we ordered the slides and started that program.
Yeah, it was about two years ago, we ordered the slides, and then last September, we published our the additional documents for teams to consider for students who, who might need different accessibility during drills. And so actually, I put in, we have a weekly school leader communicator that goes out to all of our administrators and building leaders each week. And this will be the first Thursday that they'll be going out, and I've already attached that document again and asked the building leaders to remember to use those documents in their planning and then to contact them, join us DRI, just for additional assistance. So that was something we rolled out last year, and teams were doing it, and we're just going to continue to build that out even more.
Thank you, guys.
I have a question, David, actually. So it is my understanding that, so my child has a disability and is on a five oh four plan. And part of what I understood was paraeducators or substitute teachers aren't always aware of, of the stuff, the stuff that he has going on. And in case of emergency, I was curious what that would look like because they don't have that information for them. I, that was my understanding, but I was curious as to what that looked like, or if, yeah.
Yeah, and that was part of the planning. So those planning documents should be attached and part of their educational plan. So that when there are substitutes also, they should, they should be aware of any students that need some additional assistance. And this, I should also say, a large number of the students that need these plans are students that are on an IP or a section five oh four plan. But there's also students who may have an unidentified disability with sensory issues or some other types of things that need to be considered. A lot of students, you know, with anxiety, these, they may not, they may not be on a plan, but the teams, they need to plan for those students to properly make sure that they're safe if we ever need it.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
David, with those, with substitute plans, in other districts I've worked in, we've had this practice, but is it, or a procedure, I guess, if you will, for staff when they have a substitute to have a folder with those types of information in it, like an emergency folder and things? That was something in my previous districts that we would have to have on file, so that situations like that are avoided, that you know, okay, this is fifth period, there are three students in here who have an issue, and it's with the emergency supplies, saying if we get into a situation, this is stuff that I can take with me, I know.
And that should be in their subplans, and then also our transportation, our bus drivers, because emergency can happen at any time of the day. So, yeah, so that's, that's behavior plans, and all those types of things should be included in subnotes, and go wherever the student goes during the day. You know, lunch supervision needs to know those plans as well.
Thank you. So there was, there was one addition in here that was about working with local law enforcement and fire department. Have you guys already reached out to them, or do you already do drills with them, or are they involved in making these safety plans as well?
That goes back to Victor.
Yes, we actually started this spring. We put together a multi-jurisdiction group. We met at the movie theaters earlier in this year where we've included not only school district, but we had the Department of Corrections, our local law enforcement, Lowe's, Fred Meyer, all the folks who were willing to participate in that. And including Evergreen Fairgrounds. We reviewed all of our plans. We're planning for the future. I know we've worked with the DOC quite extensively with Monroe High School on some evacuation plans and things like that. And then I've reached out to the DOT also. We're looking at trying to transport and transform, excuse me, some of our roads to get to easier access to the hill, because a lot of times down at the bottom with the turnabouts and things like that, it's hard during an emergency to get everybody in and out of there. So we're working on, work with the DOC and Department of Transportation to get alternative routes. So it's going to be a progression. We've all agreed to meet at least once a year. And then also with the fairgrounds, we have an MOU that we're going to be working on. So that is our evacuation area for all of our schools during a real emergency, and hopefully one never happens.
And what about the drills at schools?
The drills at the schools continue to go on. We set a schedule for all of our drills, and the principals report back in their safety monthly reports.
I'm sorry, I meant with the local law enforcement. Are they coming in, helping with the drills, or?
Yeah, as needed, but it's not a routine right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, there's a motion on the table, all in favor. Thank you so much, David. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Agenda item six point zero two, policy forty-two ten, regulation of dangerous weapons on school premises. Is there any motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve revisions to policy forty-two ten, regulation of dangerous weapons on school premises as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion on a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve revisions to policy forty-two ten, regulations, regulation of dangerous weapons on school premises as presented. Questions? Discussion?
Vic, I don't, I've seen these sparingly, but we're supposed to have gun-free zones signed posted throughout the district. Is that?
That is, that is correct. Every year, our support service department goes out and we either replace, repair all the signs that are in our school district, and we work on that right now during the summer, or as needed, as we get work orders submitted. It, it actually just tells, it's a, it's a gun-free zone.
Okay. Talk a lot about district employees not bringing any firearms, dangerous weapons, district property, no person renting, leasing. They go through dangerous weapons, firearm, airgun, portable device, shock, buckles, like shot, and explosive. What's your take on the fact that if if the school district believed that a student had violated this policy, an appropriate authority will promptly notify the student's parents and guardian and appropriate law enforcement agency. Students who violate this policy will be subject to dis- this kind of goes back to my earlier question with discipline, with, with Chris Cronus. Having to do with expulsion. So students who possess a firearm on school premises are, shall be expelled. But it doesn't have anything about knives, explosives, or any of these other weapons. It seems like, is this something that's following state law, or is it?
I think a lot of it has to do with, as you said, state law, or some of the way some of our discipline is switched from the expulsion to more or less working with the students and their families. The zero tolerance is with the weapons, of course, as you noted. But a lot of us are working with our high school teams, our middle school and elementary partners to decide on how best to make that happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Okay, agenda item, thank you so much, Vic. Agenda item six point zero three, school resource officer agreement. Is there any motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school resource officer agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion on a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the twenty-three, twenty-four school resource officer agreement discussion.
Just wanted to note that I appreciate the relationship that we have with Chief Jolly and his team. And they have worked really hard to continue to develop the relationship with students. So I'm excited to see that continue.
I also think it's important to have a relationship with an SRO and to have them available at the high school in the event of student safety. And just making sure there's, if something does happen, as we discussed with emergencies that come across, we have a professional, well-trained, who works in it in cooperation or collaboratively with our risk manager for the schools.
Okay, and I just wanted to- Okay, and I just wanted to clarify. So within our contract here, we have the amount for September, October, November, and December of twenty twenty three. And in here, it says that the percentage increase will be determined by the Bureau of Labor Statistics and that it was it say maximum extent of such adjustment shall be five percent. So we won't have that number to be able to determine that until it comes out in January. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, that's determined through the city contract with the police and as you said, stated exactly.
Okay, I just wanted that clarification too for others who maybe were wondering why the rest of the school year wasn't on there. So thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Vic, if I remember correctly, we were a little bit later on the ballgame last year when we were renewing our annual contract with the for the SRO. And is that is that reason that that Director Barnes brought up? Is that basically because their contract cycle is different than our fiscal year?
That is correct. Yeah, their contract and their salary schedules aren't in alignment with the school district's calendar.
Thank you.
So there's a section here about essentially supervision of the SRO and it says either chief of police or the district doesn't need. So how does that process working to speak a little bit more like?
Absolutely. Yeah, Chief Jolly is his direct supervisor as well as Commander Ryan. We meet once a month here at the district officer if or at the school wherever is convenient, but mostly where we discuss all of our SRO work during the month, all of our security work. And then at one time during the year, the chief or the commander will ask for input into the contract or into the performance of the SRO. But the the great part about it is is meeting monthly. We can address things right away if things come up or if we're not satisfied with anything in the agreements or vice versa, how things work so that our communications as I believe Director Campbell alluded to is we have a great relationship with Chief Jolly and the team and there are phone call away. So if anytime we need or something isn't going the way we want or going positive, we reach out to him right away and usually the corrections and their evaluation are all done through the police department.
And is the is the principal there at that meeting or someone from the building?
They always have input into it, but no, they are not at the monthly meetings. But if they they're always welcome.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate that not only is the district and MPD ensuring compliance with state law, but there's also a section here about the engrossed substitute house bill twelve fourteen and that makes it so that the bill centers on racial equity as an essential component of safety and security planning and training. So it ensures extra training for SROs as well as any of our security or school safety and security staff. So I appreciate that that will be updated as necessary as well. But this is really great for our community and I appreciate Officer Ryan, Chief Jolly and our SROs up at the high school. So they've done a great job. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And just to give it one more piece to the training, back in June, not only did Craig Robertson attend, but so did our ice Kelly Pitts was a lot. I sent him as well as Brent Campbell at the time for training. So they're all together. So they did a lot of collaborative work together on not only what was presented at the workshops, but helped plan for the future. So I think that was a great opportunity for them this summer to go to. So and that's ongoing during the year.
Thank you, Vic.
You're welcome.
All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed back to zero. We're good. You're good, Vic.
Good for now. I thought I'm on the ATS one too, just in case.
Okay, moving on to. Okay. Mics closer. Okay, moving on to agenda item seven point zero five, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated August fourteenth of twenty twenty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion in the second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated August fourteenth, twenty twenty three. Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Okay, moving on to agenda item eight point zero one, superintendent update.
All right, so it has definitely been an eventful last four weeks or so. The I've never really, I've always heard the analogy drinking out of a fire hose, but I'm actually feeling it right now for sure. I think part of it is I don't think I've ever started a job with as many focus groups. So I kind of did it to myself, but it's been one of the best learning experiences I think that I could have. I definitely wanted to just have a couple of items. I wanted to thank the board members for taking the time to have the board retreat. That was really helpful to me and I enjoyed getting to know all of you as well as some of the expectations that you have for me. And then just it was nice to spend some time on strategic planning and then and then board priorities. So thank you very much for that. Laura, thanks for recognizing the focus groups. I'm very happy that it was received the way that you described for sure. We have conducted and I want to thank Holly. Holly's been at all the focus groups with me and and we want to make sure that we get it right and we're able to take really good notes and understand some of the themes as as they arise. So we've had eight one hour focus groups so far. We've met with students, staff, parents and community members. The average group size has been eight or nine people at a time. The student groups are smaller than that and hopefully I talked to Laura, I think a little bit about maybe once school starts going to the cafeterias and going to the schools and given the opportunity, I think a lot of kids will will be willing to share their voice and certainly it was probably one of the more, I don't know, it was very engaging, I would say, and we were pretty excited at the end of the first student group for sure. And it was just a good reminder that our students know what's going on and and we ought to make sure that we give them ample voice as we plan for the future. While this is just, it's part of my hundred day plan, it's also a kickoff for the strategic planning process because that's all about getting input prior to making the plan. So once we go through the input gathering phase, just a reminder that we will be developing an executive summary of that. James, you asked about that before. Besides the focus groups, I've met with approximately twenty five individuals as well in the last four weeks and and again, just asking the same question, questions and taking lots of notes. As a result of the focus groups, we are adding another transition to kindergarten program to begin the first day of school. TK, you've, I mean, you've probably had some presentations here over the years. It's a legislatively established program for students who are four years old by August thirty first and have been identified as in need of additional prep in order to have a successful kindergarten experience. So I went ahead and gave you a document just to check out whenever you have the opportunity to do so, but it's definitely a program that there's been a lot of great gains statewide and it has been shown to be one of those things that do indeed close opportunity gaps. So for us, I had found out during one of the focus groups that there was a waiting a waiting list. And we also know that there's not a lot of access for some of our young learners in the community as far as high quality preschool type programs. And when I heard that there is a waiting list, I was able to go back, talk to our team and see if there were any barriers, you know, as far as us getting together at least one more classroom. And really the barriers were space, finding space and making sure we had the right resources to run that program. So again, we will be adding that program. Thanks, David Perator. He's the guy in charge of TK programs for the district. He made it happen in real short order with the team. So I really appreciate that. Moving forward, this is just one example that the state has done to ensure equitable allocation of resources out to school districts. And so for us, we want to make sure that we take full advantage. I'd be willing to bet that we have more than forty students that could benefit. So hopefully next year we'll have more like eighty to a hundred students. So we'll just get on this really early in February or through whatever child find process that we need to go through to maximize this support from the state. And for us, for the most part, it's a relatively cost neutral. The state funds this much like it would any other student that we have. We just pay for supplies as well as furniture and those kinds of things. So that's all I have.
And real quick, how many students are on the waiting list?
I think that we'll be easily able to fill at least twenty more slots. Is that right, David? So roughly twenty and 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 then I think we'll fill the need that we know of at this point.
Thank you.
On the budget executive summary, I think for twenty, the the following years budget, you have an amount allocated towards that. So for the the following year, you had money allocated towards that, I think, two hundred twenty two thousand. Something like that. That's good. It's work.
Hey, bet.
Sean, what is the number of programs again? What's the number of classrooms we have for the transition to kindergarten program for this coming year?
Two.
Two.
Including this one, yes.
Okay, all right. And then I was going to ask this in more comments anyway. So it's perfect that you brought this up. With it being cost neutral, how many programs do you see us possibly adding for next year? Because one of the conversations that we've had is talking about literacy and getting a head start on all of that because then they're just behind the eight ball the whole time. So are we are we looking at adding more of that and just kind of planning ahead with staffing and facilities for next year? That way we're not kind of behind the eight ball and there's not as much of a waiting list or?
Yeah, exactly. So what we hope will drive the number of of programs will truly be matched up with the need in the community. So that's the goal. I would guess a district this size and given what I what we all know about access to early learning here that we could, we should be able to at least double that. I'd be shocked if if we weren't able, we weren't able to. I just, what I don't understand yet is the process that we have gone through in years past. I think there was just maybe, and again, I think this is no judgment on anybody at all. But with the turnover and leadership and those kinds of things, I think the understanding was that, hey, we've budgeted for one classroom, so we're going to have one. And and when I mentioned, oh, no, we can definitely have more. Like David, again, just instantly said, oh, that's great. We can have another one. Let's go. We can reach out to those families and and go for it. So then the philosophy that we'll move forward with is, oh, no, it's a need needs based move for us. So if we have eighty students that need it, we'll want to have at least a number of classrooms that could support those numbers.
I was just wondering if maybe we have like even an advertising campaign at the end of the school year for thinking for families that are getting ready for the upcoming year. And I was not going to catch everybody, but may increase awareness in multiple languages that we could do some of that through our our communications office and things like that. And then teachers with the families of younger siblings.
You bet. Yeah, it's a great idea.
Yeah, I agree. I was going to say something similar, advertising and maybe some kind of surveys to see gauge interest. We can plan it.
You bet.
Okay. Moving on to agenda item ten points here. Nope, nine point zero one, board reports and comments. I'll go ahead really quickly and then everyone can add. All right, I wanted to provide you with a quick recap of our recent board retreat at the NWESD one eighty nine in Anacortes. We started off with a brief overview of ESD services with Larry Francois Superintendent and of NWESD one eighty nine. During the retreat, we had the opportunity to review and discuss the laws to school board standards. We actively participated in an activity that allowed us to prioritize these standards according to our district's unique needs and goals. Additionally, we look forward to discussing those board specific goals in greater detail, utilizing the results from the board self assessment at our August twenty eighth workshop. So that's our next meeting. The results from our board assessment will provide us with valuable insight into our strengths and areas for improvement, helping us shape what our future goals, what our future board goals will be more effectively. One of the highlights of the retreat was a session with Sean where we discussed discussed the Washington Standards Based Superintendent Framework. His expertise and guidance allowed us to gain a deeper understanding of the framework framework significance and how it aligns with our district's vision. Throughout the retreat, we engaged in honest and necessary conversation, fostering an environment of open dialogue and conversation and collaboration. I'm thankful for the dedication and passion of each board member and what they brought to the table. Thank you. Looking ahead, we are eagerly anticipating further discussions and engagements with our community and strategic planning process. We recognize the importance of involving all stakeholders in this endeavor as we strive to create a shared vision that reflects the aspirations and needs of our entire Monroe community. We are grateful for the opportunity to come together as a team, review important standards, set goals and engage in meaningful conversation that will go on to help us shape the future of our district. I understand that we had some technical difficulties and for that I am so grateful. Jesse, thank you for helping us out. Holly, thank you for all of the work that you continue to do. You are superheroes. And thank you for your continued support to our community. We look forward to sharing some more updates with you all soon. Especially at that next board workshop. And I also wanted to share that Freyland has a free little library. There's a YouTube link where you can just drive by. Jumpstart is off to a jumpstart today. First day was at Frank and then tomorrow Chain, Freyland, Smallby and Salem will all begin their Jumpstart programs. I was able to walk into a meeting last week on my way to another meeting and I hung out and there were lots of Star Wars themed things happening with all of our admin. I think I need to now watch Star Wars, but I know, I know you've got me, but it was really neat to see all of our admin and a lot of our building leaders or district team coming together and doing great things for students. So thank you for all of the continued work that you do during the summer months. And I also am looking forward to having some safety updates. Sean didn't even get to the fun stuff, but he's been hard at work with a lot of the safety just concerns or support around some of our schools. And I'm excited to continue to share some of those updates with Kelly is here. And those are all of my updates.
Okay, so August seventh, Mayor Thomas recognized and made a proclamation that for Monroe, that is Purple Heart Day. The flag was raised at City Hall. And on November twentieth of last year, the Monroe School District passed a resolution declaring the Monroe School District a Purple Heart District. So I just thought I would reread this. Thank you, Holly, for the printout. It's resolution number thirteen twenty twenty two. Whereas the Monroe School District and our community have a great admiration and the utmost gratitude and respect for all the men and women who have and are selflessly serving this their country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces. And whereas citizens of our country and community have received the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaging in combat with an enemy force construed as a singularly meritorious act of essential service. And whereas the Monroe School District seeks to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal and therefore be a result that the Monroe School District of Monroe, Washington, to be proclaimed a Purple Heart District, honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect our freedoms. So I just want to again, thank every single individual who has served our country. I'm truly grateful and I appreciate it. So also, I will say that the board retreat was wonderful. It was great to be able to dialogue about sort of visions, timelines of things, working on getting a strategic plan put together and looking at March as the day. Sort of when you're chomping at the bit and wanting to get things done, I was kind of pleased to see that it was so soon and the amount of engagement that you've already been able to do with the community. That is such an important piece and I'm really looking forward to participating in a lot more of that because I love engaging with the community. So there's that. I've been enjoying summer. I hope the rest of you have as well and that you stay cool in the heat wave that's coming up here the next couple of days. Find some water if you can, or an air conditioner. And also the Fair Day Parade on the twenty sixth, I will be there. I'm excited to see everybody there. I'm excited to see everybody walking in the parades to see all the kids. to see all the kids, to just celebrate our community and have us come together. So I look forward to seeing you there if you are there.
All right, on that, also just, it was really good to get to finally visit the ESD, talk to Larry Francois. We haven't had a chance to do that. I've never met him before. And so it was really good to be able to attend the retreat and get to see the ESD, the services they offer, meet Larry Francois and the services that they offer. Also Sean, I really appreciate the, the setup that you had for the beginning components of our strategic plan, the growth components that we're talking about with evaluations and self-reflection so that we continue to grow. And we're doing that in an intentional way and we're not just trying to flounder along. And I feel that that leads into my next thing is I really am excited about momentum up with us moving forward with this school year that we have a lot of the right components in place finally that we can really get moving along and make a lot of, of growth for students and their success. Because that's what we're here for. Also, uh, excited to maybe look into some budget things, things like the, uh, the minimum fund balance and seeing if there's areas that we have that can, that's an example of saying, okay, here are areas that have been adjusted many years ago because of a need at that time, but as they come up and we're finding things to say, what can we refine based on the needs that we have now? So there's some things that I'm excited that are, are coming up. Uh, I was excited to see Superintendent Woodward at National Night Out. Sporting his shorts and his Monroe, uh, his Monroe Bearcat gear as well. So thank you for coming to that. And uh, also just for the rest of you, we've got an email in our inboxes for Volunteers of America that's putting on the grand opening for the Western Washington Ecap, uh, preschool campus on the seventeenth. And I know that several officers are planning on being there. So I know Holly will get a announcement out for that, but that's exciting to see that. That's on Thursday at six at the Boys and Girls Club, right? Yeah. And so excited to see that, uh, things going on in our community. And then the combine started for football today. Band was out today. Cheer is getting up and running. And so it's fun. I was up at the high school today and seeing a lot of different extracurricular activities, getting ready to get geared up for the beginning of the school year. There is a buzz. And it was really cool to see students out there and really excited about a lot of the extracurricular activities that they're involved in and getting started on that. So I'm really excited and also the, uh, getting to see the pictures. I, I missed out on the, the, the principal meeting, but we were there last year for that. And I think it was a Harry Potter theme last year, right? And I love our administrators and the passion that they have for students. They get into it. Sean, it's like a whole thing here. So, uh, but I, I appreciate that because that becomes contagious to their staff. And that filters down into the students and that excitement just builds. And so just want to thank our admin team for, for that, that they do have fun and they're high quality, but they, they play hard and they also work hard. And that's, um, awesome to see them doing that. So just all of these things as we have that buzz, uh, leading up to September, getting really excited for what's coming up.
All right. Um, yeah, I just wanted to speak about the board retreat as well. You know, I think it was really good for us to get together. I know there were a lot of comments and concerns about, you know, why don't we just do it in this room? And I just wanted to add some color to that. You know, I think there's value in just kind of getting out of the comfort zone, um, and getting into like a new location and just kind of be stuck in a room together and, you know, throw things on the board and see what sticks and bounce ideas up each other and have you like a more open dialogue and discussion about priorities and what we value and what we think, you know, the next year should go. Also is a great opportunity, you know, to get Sean, or get to know Sean better and let him know what our expect, expectations are. And we do have high expectations. And, uh, I personally have high expectations myself and my fellow board members. So I think it was a really good step in the right direction. You know, I am new to the board, but from what I understand, this was the first board retreat in a while. Um, I think we'll do better, you know, each time we do it. And I hope, uh, we continue to work on that. And I just want to say, I think this group is a very strong group and I'm really glad that we had that time to spend together, build that foundation. And I think we are, we do a very good job at listening to each other and bound, you know, like I said, have varying viewpoints, but you know, we give opportunity for people to speak, share their ideas. And so I really hope this group can stick together and tackle these big challenges in front of us going forward.
Go Monroe. All right. It is six fifty-five PM and tonight's meeting is adjourned.